Hi, you did. You did? You did?
Steve, are we ready to go?
We're good to go.
Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. And Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Fastinelli.
Present.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Pitts.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rosini.
Here.
Mayor Colacott.
Here.
All present.
To open our council meeting, I would invite outgoing Councilman Bill Nelson, a veteran of the United States Air Force, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers and speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. At this time, members of the public, I'll move to public comments, and at this time, members of the public may address the council on any off agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do we have any cards?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two that have, well, a number of blue cards, but only two have for generalized comments. A number of them are for item three, so we'll hold those comments for number three until later. But the two that are generalized comments are Wayne Szel.
Thank you, Steve. Wayne Szel, 18202, Montana Circle, right here in Villa Park. I just want to say thank you to those of you who are willing to serve. I want to say thank you particularly to Bill, who's leaving off the council. Bill, you've worked hard. It hasn't been the most pleasant experience for you. I think I had a better experience for the years I was on. But strife is something that's sort of going around right now, and feelings are more important than emotions than facts and objectivity. So I think we're in a trend, and I hope that that trend will turn back to where we are more patient, more understanding, and more polite, including the way people drive. How many times have you seen somebody run a red light? You don't dare start up on the green anymore until you've looked both ways. Any rate, thank you for serving. Diana, you too, you've done your best, and we thank you for the service. So I just want to say that and also say welcome to the newcomers that'll be up here soon, and I know it's going to be a good year in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the only other public comment is for Councilman Bill Nelson.
I'll hold mine to three as well.
Okay, and I have one last comment I'd like to enter in. In closing public comment, I'd like to thank Bill Nelson for his service on council and for his ongoing service to our community over the past 30 years. Prior to election to council, Bill served on the Orange County Grand Jury, the Villa Park Investment Advisory Committee, and the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. I didn't know Bill before he ran for election to council in 2014. Bill came in first, and I came in second in a field of six. Although both recently elected, Bill became a mentor and a good friend, and I valued his wisdom in council. Bill has been a dedicated councilman and a true champion of transparency. Examples include his leadership in updating our financial reporting procedures and his efforts to update the city's strategic plan, which states in black and white our city's objectives and our plans to achieve them. Bill, I'll miss your participation on council, but I will always value your friendship. Good luck to you and Ula on your retirement from council.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, with that, public comment is closed. I'll now move to municipal election matters. Our first time of business tonight is the November 8, 2016 general municipal election results.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Sorry, this is a big agenda keeping me behind. Item number one is the November 6, 2018 general municipal election results, the certification of those actions. Those actions were approved and counted by the county registrar of voters, and we received a notification yesterday afternoon with the final results, and we've transmitted those to you. As a result of those results, we will adopt resolution number 2018-3439, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 6 and declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. So with that, I would recommend approval by the council. This will be a roll call vote. We need a motion in a second.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Oh, and I would take for the record that the county board of supervisors.
Sorry, this thing.
Somebody wants to comment. The county board of supervisors certified the election results this morning at their meeting at 9:30 a.m.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, I have a motion in a second to approve. Please vote.
We don't, we'll be voting roll call on tonight. Councilman Fastinelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini.
Yes.
Mayor Colacott.
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 5-0 vote, and that concludes the last formal action of this council. So with that, I would think it's an opportunity for those outgoing councilmen or women who would like to speak to have a chance to say something.
I'll say something. I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Villa Park for the past four years, and I just hope my being on the council has made a positive contribution to the city.
I have a little bit more to say, and I'm sure that doesn't surprise everybody. And I normally don't have notes, but today's a little bit different. When I began this journey, my three children, two of which are here today, were still at Villa Park Elementary. Today, my boys are turning 18 in two weeks. Their seniors are applying for college. My daughter is six months behind them. Six years doesn't seem like a long time, but when you look at it through the eyes of your children and you see them grow, it's an eternity. I entered this council when the city center was being held on a moratorium for new business. It was a hard time to come in. We could not allow businesses in. The residents were upset that the gas station was closed. The city chambers were packed till 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning. It was very difficult. And then, enter fireworks. Fireworks, it was packed outside, inside, on the floor, yelling, screaming, fights. It was hot, we learned a lot, and we got through it. I hope the new council never sees a moratorium on business in this city again. But those are distant memory. During this journey, I've made great strides to bring transparency to our city government. It wasn't easy. The council was reluctant. They didn't want recordings, they didn't want minutes, because change is hard, so the reluctance comes with change. But I finally was successful in getting the committees to have recordings, to have minutes, and that was for the benefit of the public. I initiated senior transportation. This was something that was always available to the city, but sometimes it just takes a visionary to say, hey, let's go out there and let's use the dollars that we have afforded to us and allow our seniors to use it. And it's a great program. I initiated, along with Barnett, to pay down our unfunded pension liability, $300,000. It was a lot of money. We had a council that worked together but didn't agree with everything, but when it came down to business for the city, it worked. I added hundreds of thousands of dollars to our reserves in the first four years by voting yes for the budget, by voting for more money to go into reserves than we had to. The last two years, not so much. That's something that's very important to me, something that I hope that this new council will change. I brought you informational town forums, something that we had not done in years, on disability, on transportation, senior age issues, council on aging, earthquake preparedness, Red Cross seminars, coyote and wilderness, and emergency preparedness. Even started a yearly drug prescription return. That's something that other cities do, but we'd never done it. You know, we don't have the staff to do that. We had water forums, and of course, as everyone knows, the infamous flu shot forum. I held a bike rodeo for adults, and they came. It was fun, and I distribute dirt yearly to you with recycle. Any of you who garden know that I'm there every year. I brought you those blue cards that are in the back, put the podium in the center so people could address the council, and again, for transparency, got you electronic voting, which was hard. But we're moving forward. The smart room's going to come in the next two years. I advocated for our schoolchildren. I moved the crossing guard from an area that had less than 20 walkers, and I know that people want somebody there, to the high school where they have thousands of kids across the street every day. There's a lot more, but there's no reason to continue about that. I've made friendships that are golden. I have people that I've added to my family. I did not know Greg Mills till I got on the council. He is a family member to us now, his daughter, his wife, Robbie. I didn't know Robbie. I knew of him, we were in a play together for the 50th anniversary, but now, they have become good neighbors, they've become good friends, although we don't vote together all the time. That's okay. I have a lot of thank yous. I will thank you personally, but Pam, I see you in the back. Thank you. Crystal and Chad, I wish you the best for the next four years. I walked for you, my children walked for you, my husband walked for you. And believe me, that's a big one. We believe in you, we know that you will bring goodness to the city, you will bring order to it. You are independent thinkers. I look forward to your leadership up here, I look forward to you working with the council, and I look forward to the change. Thank you to the residents for six years. I served as your mayor, your Mayor Protem, and your councilwoman. My decisions were always forward-thinking, they were community-oriented. I have no agenda, not going anywhere. I'm going back to work, I'm going back to being a mom, I'm going back to being a wife, I'm going back to being a volunteer, which has never stopped. I looked at the history of our city, I applied my decisions with that, I looked to the future, I had independence, I didn't care what my friend was voting on, because I represent the people on my own. And the people have voted for five different people. Thank you for six years.
Okay, we will now administer the oath of office and seat our new council members. Mr. City Clerk, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I have the privilege of swearing in three new councilmembers, three people for their first, two for their first council, and one for a return. So we'll do that one by one. So at first, if I could ask Mayor Colacott to come down and bring your guest forward. This is my mother Carol, and my sister Laura. And my mother will hold the Bible for me as I say the pledge. So if you put your left hand on the Bible and your right hand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. So this, the execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. I, Robert Colacott.
I, Robert Colacott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. If you could sign this for me. Your next, I'd like to please ask Crystal Miles to come forward and introduce.
Congratulations.
If you could please ask Crystal Miles to come forward and introduce.
Thank you, Robbie.
You don't have enough of those.
One for each chair, I guess.
My husband, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
My husband is Mason, and they're going to get stuck. And he says, "I'm grounded, I'm responsible, and I want..."
So if you could put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Again, the execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. I, Crystal Miles.
I, Crystal Miles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any...
Mental reservation.
Mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Okay, we will now discuss the election of mayor, Mayor Protem, by the city council. If I could, I'm sorry, Mayor, the comments for the newly-elected yourself included, you could make this be appropriate time.
Oh, I, excuse me. Let's see. Crystal?
I would just like to say, it's, I am so humbled and honored to be up here, and there are a lot of friends and family that dealt with me, and the walking and the missing dinners and going back and forth from baseball games and staying up late at night. And so, to my husband and my children, thank you. To the friends that helped champion for me, it meant more than you know, and I am, I'm very honored to be here, and I cannot wait to have a great four years and an awesome next year, and we're going to have a really awesome time and move forward and be positive and have a lot of unity. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Chad?
Sure. So I also would like to thank all the people that supported me along the way. In particular, I'd like to thank my parents, who have provided a fantastic source of advice since I was little, really, but in particular, in this race, providing guidance, and my family, particularly my wife and kids, who have helped support me along the way, and to all the volunteers who've gotten out there, and especially to all the voters who voted for me. I hope to represent you fairly, honestly. I hope to always let you know what I'm thinking and to welcome your opinions. If you have ideas about things, or if you have an opinion about a matter that's coming before council, I love to hear it. I am an open mind that truly believes in listening to as many perspectives to come up with the best decision possible, and I look forward to serving you fairly in the next four years. Thank you.
Well, I'd also like to thank those that supported me in my reelection, and I'd like to thank the residents of Villa Park for the opportunity to serve a second term on city council. In my first term on council, I focused on improving our infrastructure, and I will continue this focus and work with city staff and resident infrastructure management advisory committee, develop plans to more cost-effectively manage these assets. In addition, I'll work with the council and our residents to promote projects to enhance and beautify our city. When studying for my master's in business administration at Cal State Fullerton, my management professor was Villa Park resident Dorothy Heidi. She lives over on Hillcrest still. One of her key lessons is that organizations are never static. They are either improving, or they're on the decline. They're not static. A couple of years ago, our interim city manager, Don Powell, reminded me of Dr. Heidi's lesson when he noted that cities are similarly not static. They are either improving or in decline. We all love Villa Park and want it to stay just like it is. Our challenge on city council is to provide the leadership to ensure that Villa Park remains solidly on the improving side of the curve. Finally, I'd like to welcome our new council members, Crystal Miles and Chad Zimmerman. Crystal and Chad have both committed to work with the continuing members to eliminate discord and divisiveness, and to work as a five-member team to improve our city. I look forward to working with them toward the skull. Thank you. Okay, so, let's see.
Now we'll move to the new speaker.
So, we will now discuss the election of mayor, Mayor Protem, by the city council. Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
There you go. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, new council members. This time, we're going to follow some historical procedures. We'll be conducting the election for mayor, and after that, I will turn it back to the new mayor, and he'll subsequently, or she'll subsequently, conduct the election of the Mayor Protem. So what we'll do first is, we're going to open up for public comment, and then after that, I will go through the rules of procedure and how it will all happen, because there's a certain historical procedure that we need to follow on this and rules prescribed. So we're going to open up for public comments. I've received a number of comments. At very first, I did receive a letter, again, that I received, it was asked, and somebody who was sick and able to go out of the house, but she'd asked to read the letter into the record. So I will do that to start it, and then I'll open up to the blue comments. So, said, "I would like to convey my recommendations to the new Villa Park City Council in selecting the next mayor of Villa Park. First, vote for the residents of Villa Park, not for yourselves. Any one of you can be selected as mayor, but are you ready? Do you have the experience and political connections to serve the needs of Villa Park? The first rule of politics is politicians speak to politicians, staff to staff. It is the mayor's role to communicate to other politicians and solve the problems facing the city. As we learned, when a rainwater runoff pipe collapsed in the storm in the winter of 2016, situation can occurs where it's necessary to call from the county or other cities. The eight-foot corrugated pipe collapsed and more rain was scheduled for the next morning. It was Councilman Rosini who had Supervisor Spitzer's phone number, and Councilman Colacott who made the call to request county resource to help before the city was flooded. Huge earth-moving equipment was sent to dig out the collapsed pipe and create a channel for the rainwater runoff, all before the city woke up the next morning. We'll depend on our mayor to handle such situations. Second, during the campaign, several candidates said they wanted to end the divisiveness in the council. Start tonight. For years, the Mayor Protem was voted to be next mayor because the role helped prepare that individual for the responsibilities of mayor. Why would that not continue this tradition? I urge you to select Mayor Protem, Vince Rosini, for mayor. He has the background to be a great mayor of Villa Park, including a master's in public administration from USC. He's also reached out to all council members and residents regardless of differences. Then select a Mayor Protem and help that person be ready for our next great mayor, Mary Bell Felson. That's for the record. Okay? Our next, our first speaker, present this evening, is Howard Kirshner.
Well, hello, new council. Congratulations to our new members.
Thank you.
We'd like to see you here. So I'm Howard Kirshner, known to some as Howie Kazawee. I live in Oakwood Circle. I know that each of our new members will make a strong contribution.
I would just like to say, it's, I am so humbled and honored to be up here, and there are a lot of friends and family that dealt with me, and the walking, and the missing dinners, and going back and forth from baseball games, and staying up late at night, and so, to my husband and my children, thank you. To the friends that helped champion for me, it meant more than you know, and I am, I'm very honored to be here, and I cannot wait to have a great four years, and an awesome next year, and we're gonna have a really awesome time, and move forward, and be positive, and have a lot of unity, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad.
Sure. So, I also would like to thank all the people that supported me along the way. In particular, I'd like to thank my parents, who have provided a fantastic source of advice, since I was little, really, but in particular, in this race, providing guidance, and my family, particularly my wife and kids, who have helped support me along the way, and to all the volunteers who've gotten out there, and especially to all the voters who voted for me. I hope to represent you fairly, honestly. I hope to always let you know what I'm thinking, and to welcome your opinions. If you have ideas about things, or if you have an opinion about a matter that's coming before council, I love to hear it. I am an open mind that truly believes in listening to as many perspectives to come up with the best decision possible, and I look forward to serving you fairly in the next four years. Thank you.
Well, I'd also like to thank those that supported me in my reelection, and I'd like to thank the residents of Villa Park for the opportunity to serve a second term on city council. In my first term on council, I focused on improving our infrastructure, and I will continue this focus and work with city staff and resident infrastructure management advisory committee, develop plans to more cost-effectively manage these assets. In addition, I'll work with the council and our residents to promote projects to enhance and beautify our city. When studying for my master's in business administration at Cal State Fullerton, my management professor was Villa Park resident Dorothy Heidi. She lives over on Hillcrest still. One of her key lessons is that organizations are never static. They are either improving, or they're on the decline. They're not static. A couple of years ago, our interim city manager, Don Powell, reminded me of Dr. Heidi's lesson, when he noted that cities are similarly not static. They are either improving or in decline. We all love Villa Park and want it to stay just like it is. Our challenge on city council is to provide the leadership to ensure that Villa Park remains solidly on the improving side of the curve. Finally, I'd like to welcome our new council members, Crystal Miles and Chad Zimmerman. Crystal and Chad have both committed to work with the continuing members to eliminate discord and divisiveness, and to work as a five-member team to improve our city. I look forward to working with them toward the skull. Thank you. Okay, so, let's see.
Now, we'll go to Mr. Speaker.
So, we will now discuss the election of mayor, mayor pro tem by the city council. Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
There you go. Okay. Thank you, mayor and council members, new council members. This time, we're gonna follow some historical procedures. We'll be conducting the election for mayor, and after that, I will turn it back to the new mayor, and he'll subsequently, or she'll subsequently conduct the election of the mayor pro tem. So, what we'll do first is, we're gonna open up for public comment, and then after that, I will go through the rules of procedure and how it will all happen, because there's a certain historical procedure that we need to follow on this, and rules prescribed. So, we're gonna open up for public comments. I received a number of comments. At very first, I did receive a letter, again, that I received, it was asked, and somebody who was sick and able to go out of the house, but she'd ask to read the letter into the record. So, I will do that to start it, and then I'll open it up to the blue comments. So, it said, "I would like to convey my recommendations to the new Villa Park City Council in selecting the next mayor of Villa Park. First, vote for the residents of Villa Park, not for yourselves. Any one of you can be selected as mayor, but are you ready? Do you have the experience and political connection to serve the needs of Villa Park? The first rule of politics is politicians speak to politicians, staff to staff. It is the mayor's role to communicate to other politicians and solve the problems facing the city. As we learned, when a rain water runoff pipe collapsed in the storm in the winter of 2016, situation can occurs where it's necessary to call from the county or other cities. The eight-foot corrugated pipe collapsed and more rain was scheduled for the next morning. It was Councilman Rossini who had Supervisor Spitzer's phone number, and Councilman Colacott who made the call to request county resource to help before the city was flooded. Huge earth-moving equipment was sent to dig out the collapsed pipe and create a channel for the rain water runoff, all before the city woke up the next morning. We'll depend on our mayor to handle such situations. Second, during the campaign, several candidates said they wanted to end the divisiveness in the council. Start tonight. For years, the mayor pro tem was voted to be next mayor because the role helped prepare that individual for the responsibilities of mayor. Why would that not continue this tradition? I urge you to select Mayor Pro Tem Vince Rossini for mayor. He has the background to be a great mayor of Villa Park, including a master's in public administration from USC. He's also reached out to all council members and residents regardless of differences. Then, select a mayor pro tem, and help that person be ready for our next great mayor. Mary Bell Felson, for the record. Okay? Our next, our first speaker present this evening is Howard Kirschner.
Well, hello, new council. Congratulations to our new members.
Thank you.
We like to see you here. So, I'm Howard Kirschner, known to some as Howie Kazawee. I live in Oakwood Circle. I know that each of our new members will make a strong contribution to the improvement, improved direction of Villa Park, and develop a mode and tone of governance that is consistent with the positive and cordial environment that the city expects. In light of the hope that we will soon see a major improvement in the professional and cooperative interactions of our city government representatives, I'm here to make a recommendation to the new city council to elect Robbie Pitts as our new mayor. The tradition of graduating mayor pro tem to mayor is not a policy, nor has it been without exception in the past. As a former candidate running against Robbie, I know well his level of integrity, openness, and ability to communicate and cooperate in a cooperative environment. Robbie is as or more qualified as any candidate. He now has a solid two-year experience in the council, and a full understanding of the operation of the city. Robbie has been the only councilperson, in my perspective, to provide an example of peacemaker since his election. He was not awarded committee leadership positions in significant committees, and expressed his disappointment, and then moved on, and has done a tremendous job with his current committees. He casts his vote consistently based on his assessment of what is best for the city, and reflective of the opinions of his constituents, regardless of the balance of the opinion of the council. Beyond the functioning of the council, Robbie has been the most active city leader, in my perspective, in a wide range of activities. He's highly visible and consistently in touch with the people of Villa Park. He has a firm grasp of their perspectives and opinions. His council votes are consistently reflective of that contact and involvement with the folks of our town. My observations over the past few weeks is that a very large contingency of Villa Park residents see Robbie as the most in tune to their feelings about what Villa Park has historically been, and their desire to preserve that atmosphere. Robbie, in their view, is our best leadership opportunity. It is my feeling that, of the vast number of my neighbors, and the vast number of my labors, that Robbie will be the best provider of mayoral leadership that the people of Villa Park seek. He will take the lead in re-establishing a balanced council, able to come to consensus through open-mindedness and compromise. He will help lead the council, take Villa Park in the right direction. So, elect Robbie as our new mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Richard Merg. If I could remind speakers, there's a five-minute limit per speaker.
Okay. Richard Merg, 9281 Tri-Circle, Villa Park. Good evening, mayor and council people. I heard for the selection of the mayor and pro tem mayor is gonna be open to the entire Looking at this, I would like to put this in the prospect of my own life when I joined the police departments. I was brand-new at the police department in San Ana, 1966. I put on my gun, I put on my uniform, and I went to roll call. And at roll call, they called my name and said, "You're assigned to training officer so-and-so." And I said, "Training officer? What's that for?" And I was assigned to this man for six months. He was a seasoned officer, been on the department nine years. The reason I was assigned to him, because even though I had two years prior police work back in Cleveland, Ohio, I was going to California, new laws, different laws, different courts, different judges, everything was different. My training officer told me, "You're gonna be assigned to me for six months, and you're gonna be my shadow, you're gonna follow me, you have any questions whatsoever, I will give you the answers." I've been around, I know people, I know where to go, what to do, in all kinds of situations. And he was a well-versed officer. So, for six months, I was writing, taking notes, watching the officer, listening to him, see how he reacts to people, see where he goes, to which people he goes to under certain circumstances, which judges he's known, which people he contacts when he needs help. And I wrote everything down, and I realized that I had to go through this training, because if they would just throw me out there with no experience, I think I could do my job? Yeah, probably, I could probably do it, but I do it very, very badly, and somebody might wind up getting killed, 'cause I was inexperienced in all the laws and everything out here in California. That's how I see people get to know their new job, and I wouldn't like to see a newly-hired peace officer in my old police department, the first day or the first one or two months, see him in a sergeant's position, 'cause I was a sergeant for thirty-four years. And I think you gotta know what you're doing when you're running the streets, you own the streets, you tell people what to do, you order people what to do, you arrest people, and you see that your men do the same likewise, and you approve all the arrests. If I haven't gone through that training route, you need some time to know the job, know the people, and everything else. So, I would highly recommend that anybody considered for mayor and pro tem should be on their second term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Buxton.
Good evening, Mayor Colacott, is this all, city council members. I wanna just quickly thank the former council members for their service. Bill Nelson, who I think has, even prior to service on council, made great contributions to our city, and to Deanna Fassinelli, who, while we often disagreed wildly on issues, I do thank you for your service. It's a thankless job, and I at least thank her for serving. I wanna talk about the selection of mayor. As I see it, there are two choices for mayor tonight, and that would be Mayor Pro Tem Rossini and Councilmember Pitts. Protocol and historic precedent would dictate that Mayor Pro Tem Rossini should be our mayor. If you look at education and background, Mayor Pro Tem Rossini should be selected as mayor. He holds undergraduate and graduate degrees in public administration, and has actually served in the public sector. If you look at his leadership skills, he has also demonstrated his abilities in this area as well. He founded and chaired the wildly successful LEAC Committee, and hence has played a role in the low crime rate that we experience in our city today. He has asked Councilmember Pitts to partner with him on the short-term rental prohibition, and has voted with councilperson Fassinelli where appropriate. He has created strong ties with our residents, volunteers, Neighborhood Watch, and the Orange Unified School District. Despite fierce political partisanship, his conduct has remained above reproach. If you look at his service on council, Mayor Pro Tem Rossini has always risen above the division, and appealed to his council members to work together. Now, we have two new members on council, and I'm thrilled for their interest in serving this city. I welcome you, and congratulations, I voted for you, I encouraged others to vote for you. So, I'm very thrilled to see you there. As for the mayor's seat, though, we do not yet know how your background and experience will benefit our city. It would be stunning for any new council members to presume that they would be a legitimate candidate for mayor. I could understand it if either of our candidate, or if any new candidate came forward, and if they had previously served in a similar capacity, or perhaps had been fervently attending city council meetings, and had a good grasp on the history of issues in the city, and current issues, and had gotten involved, but this is not the case here. This is the time, in my opinion, for councilmembers Mills and Zimmerman to acclimate, learn, and prepare for a role as mayor in the future. We have a new city council, I'm very hopeful that we will move into a new era for our city. It's time for our council to show and to respond to Villa Park, that we want to see the divisiveness of the past behind. This will happen when Mayor Pro Tem Rossini is selected for mayor. He's already sitting in the mayor pro tem position, he's highly, highly qualified, and he will guide the council and lead as we would hope that he would. I urge you to focus on what's best for our city. Vote for Vince for mayor. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Mills.
I'm here as a representative of several folks here in town tonight, and I'm here on behalf of Robbie Pitts, because a lot of citizens in this city believe that he should be our mayor in the 2019 year. This office is typically a reflection of our values, of our community, and through twenty years of service and more, this community Robbie has that enduring quality. Robbie has consistently supported the Villa Park Little League, both in presence and donation over his residency in Villa Park, and served at the Villa Park Library events over the years in effort to fundraise on behalf of our library for our children, and of course, our adult citizens as well. Also, as a technology professional, he's a well-qualified individual, Robbie served as a VP Technology Committee and as a private citizen. Also, realizing the duties as a councilman in the last few years, it's important, he realizes it's very important to do your homework, understanding key issues, and as an example, toured the Santa Ana Riverbed with the OC Sheriff, Mrs. Fassinelli, and Mr. Frank, seeing the homeless situation firsthand. Robbie's also provided a staffed ambulance for our local kids to tour and ask questions, all the while the AMR paramedics are talking to the kids, taking their vitals, showing them there's nothing to be afraid of, and should an ambulance be necessary, and to respect authority. Further, Robbie was a member of the first CERT class, and was certified, of course, participated in several drills, and became the team lead. Also, during the storms of 2016, no one really saw Robbie deeply involved after the Henderson Mesa storm drain collapsed. He was intrinsically involved. He spent the entire time, practically all weekend, helping Mike Knowles, our city maintenance supervisor, fill and deliver sandbags around the city, keeping it safe, and of course, at the location there at Mesa and Lemon. The 2000 VP Great American Picnic, Robbie was a good sport when asked to participate at the Dump Tank event, and even before and after, he took his turn working at both the Rotary and Foundation booths. Considering Foundation events, Robbie was a key active member of the 50th anniversary celebration, and every year, has some important duty with the annual Dryland Yacht Parade, concerts in the park, and organized the 25th anniversary VIP and Veterans Celebration from last year. Robbie regularly volunteers at the local American Legion post in service to our veterans, and of course, there are many VP veterans here that reside in Villa Park. He is humbled in honoring our veterans as a private citizens and representing Villa Park, including the opening ceremony of the Field of Valor in 2018, just passed. Further, as do many in Villa Park, Robbie's family proudly hosted the Marine Thanksgiving for many years, and this year spent Thanksgiving with their own active-duty Navy granddaughter. Robbie has supported the Villa Park High School through donations and presence at games, events, and cooked pancakes at the 2018 Pancake Breakfast, and I believe the 2017 as well, 'cause I was there with him. Robbie has instilled champion speed signs on the Villa Park Road to slow oncoming traffic towards center to help reduce potential hazards for drivers, and more importantly, for the children crossing there that are the ones that do. Villa Park Rotary, of course, is a linchpin in this community and for many years. In addition to helping build the STEM and lab at Villa Park Elementary, Robbie has offered to set up, cook, and do all sorts of things for Rotaryian events, even before he was a Rotarian. Prior to joining the Villa Park Rotary, he was also the honorary Rotarian of the year, and he volunteered for over ten years, as I said before joining, in 2016. Of interest, Robbie will be a character in Bob Connell's next book, based upon the last fundraising event held by the Library Foundation. Lastly, but not maybe most importantly, he's a Villa Park Women's League husband. You all know, when your wife is in Villa Park Women's League, you have duties. Husbands of the league members contribute heavily to the community. Robbie is no exception and exemplary to all. Robbie is our choice for Villa Park mayor, and we respectfully encourage the council members to consider all the above and more not mentioned here to install Robbie Pitts our mayor tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ed Carter.
Good evening, good to see you all up there. Just to clarify things, Mr. Mills read a letter that was signed by the following people: Former mayor and councilmember Barry Dens, Jim Reichert, Rich Omer, Patricia Bordle, Greg Mills, Deanna Fassinelli, and Jim Fasbender, and Bob Bell, who's also a distinguished citizen, also former mayor Brad Reese, former supervisor Bill Campbell, distinguished citizens Robert Cornell and Bob Brockmire, and the following citizens, Chris Kim, Jeannie Torres, Keith Bonner, Carl Arnold, Brandon Biddle, Barbara Steinsland, Darlene Lundgren, Ron Stubber, Pat Riley, Ed Curtis, John Summer, Jerry Stefani, Betsy Little, Bill Baker, Stefani McMillan, Jerry Bass, Judy Henderson, Bree Biddle, Pat Foutoe, Nicole Jones, Jeannie DeSantis, Neil Wells, Beth Riley, Lisa Reese, Robert Frackleton, Carl Crutzinger, Dean Perumba, Denise Biddle, Noni Flynn, Armando Rendon, Emily Weingarth, Tom Mack, Jill Cooley, Linda Buffington, Jody Arnold, Brett Biddle, Luis Lopez, Tanye Blondell, Gloria Bonner, Jeff McMillan, Mike Henderson, Barbara Brockmire, Thad Stacker, Eileen DeSantis, Carol Powell, excuse me, Calvin Powell, Bev Omer, Rosa Palace, Diane Pusino, Alan Bordle, Barbara Chavain, excuse my mispronunciation, Brennan Biddle, Fred Fassinelli, Howard Kirschner, Angela Polk, Karen Cohn, Bridget Barrell, Carolyn Reichert, Lori Crutzinger, Chris Jones, Dean Marcus, Ed Carter, Matt Howe, Phil Buffington, Sue Kaiser, Bob Zimmerman, Keith Casenheiser, Judy Cleary, Jay Applebaum, Elaine Cornell, Morella Rendon, Linda Arnold, Lars Steinsland, Marie Stubber, Arnold Stefani, Jason Lucini, Nick Rogers, Steve Stern, Denise Lopez, Jim Little, Mike Cornu, Daniel Dinez, Angela Fasbinder, Joe Calder, Sandy Bass, Pat Schroder, Teddy Wells, Frank DeSantis, Madonna Frackleton, Glenn Weingarth, Suzie Cassiner, Anita Kantak, Alan Howe, Patty Mack, Kristini Rendon, Jeannie Zimmerman, Carmen Carter, Elizabeth Usher, Pam Dunn, Terry Vernon, Carol Dunzing, Nick Rogers, Susan Powell, Michael Powell, Dominic Pusino, Wayne Johnson, Andrea Mills, Barbara Kirschner, John Barrell, Wolfgang Arnold, Helaney Stern, Don Schreiber, Laura Foutoe, Angela Howe, Arthur Dunn, Jack Cleary, Mary Campbell, Amy Anderson, Terry Applebaum, Betty Galikey, Kathy Curtis, Corinne Kantak, John Shaboni, Ed Howard, Ryan Polk, I'm getting there, Jim Marcus, Craig Binlik, Linda Cornu, Rick Calder, Brian Rendon, Karen Goldberg, and Mel Vernon. Once again, excuse my mispronunciation, and regardless of who comes out of this tonight, I'll support whoever the candidate is. Thank you so much for your service, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Jack Cleary.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jack Cleary, formerly of 1-8-3-5-2, Sarah Villag- My name is Jack Cleary, formerly of 1-8352, Sarah Village Drive in Villa Park. I speak as a friend of the residents of Villa Park. Crystal Mills, Chad Zimmerman, and Vince Rosini, in your new positions, I encourage you to be very factual in your presentation to the citizens of Villa Park. Unfortunately, in the past, our current mayor, Robert Colacott, approached a lot of the citizens living along the valley with a project to bury the utility lines underground. That sounds very great, but we were told that the Edison Company, the Telephone Company, and the city of Villa Park would share in the expense of that project. That wasn't true. Each of the homeowners were going to be assessed the cost of that whole project based on the footage in front of their property. So I challenge you to think hard, think long, and fast on each of the upcoming decisions that you will be faced in the coming years. Mayor Robert Colacott has served as mayor. We thank you for your service, but it's time to move on. There's one man on this council right now who has the business knowledge and experience who will help guide this council in the future, because you're going to need a strong businessman, and that's Robert Pitts. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Whitman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Congratulations, Chad and Crystal, on your appointments and elections. I'm here to speak on behalf of Vince Rosini for mayor, and also second to having Robbie Pitts be the mayor pro tem for the next year. I want to speak on Vince's accomplishments. The storm drain failure was mentioned as one of his accomplishments. I don't think people really understand how important his initial actions were. He was the one, along with Bob, who made the initial decision to call Todd Spitzer to get that heavy equipment out there. Without the heavy equipment, that storm drain would have failed considerably, and we would have lost multiple homes in that area. So filling the sandbags and all that after the fact is all good, but the initial response is what saved that and what made the result as good as it could possibly be. I just want to talk about some of Vince's other accomplishments. When he was Chair of LEAC, he helped create some Villa Park ordinances to address a frat house we had in the city that was causing a lot of strife with neighbors in that area. He's also worked through the workers' comp issues related to our CERT programs and has got OCSD and the Fire Authority to work together to train our residents in emergency preparedness. He's also shown the ability to work well with Robbie Pitts, when the two of them also supported a measure to end short-term rentals here in the city. It took a lot of courage on both their parts to support this, because even though there was only a few operators of short-term rentals, a few operators impact property values of many residents. Vince also worked to build and strengthen partnerships with the school district by inviting them to speak at the city council meetings, and the recent programs of identifying, rewarding, outstanding achievement of our students here in Villa Park has been another measure. But accomplishments and endorsements are not enough to be mayor. I've had the pleasure of serving with Vince on the LEAC committee for four years. The first two years I was vice chair while he was chair, and my last two years have been as chair. I've gotten a chance to see Vince's strong leadership skills. He has the ability of bringing people together who have differing opinions to reach consensus. He doesn't, he rises above the fray, he listens to each point, and makes educated decisions on what's best for the residents. So endorsements, accomplishments, they're all great and good, but leadership qualities are what really matter to become mayor, and Vince has those. One of the things that I read during the election and when campaign promises were being made was to end divisiveness in the city and to get a city council that's going to work well together. I think based on past traditions in this city and the fact that prior mayor pro tems have routinely moved on to become mayor, mayor pro tem provides that training and ability to step into the mayor's position, I think is paramount. And I think the promises that were made to end the divisiveness in the city will begin by putting Vince Rosini in mayor and Robbie Pitts into city council. I think if everything plays out the way it should be, if you guys can all play nice with each other, all five of you sitting on that board will have the ability to be a mayor and a mayor pro tem in this city, but it's going to take all of you working together on it. So I also want to go out and I want to just thank Bill for all your service, Bill. One thing I could say about you, Bill, is you are a true gentleman. And to Deanna Facinelli, I didn't always agree with you, but I appreciate your passion. I also appreciate the sacrifices that you made to serve on the city council. I know you did your best. We didn't always agree, but I know what, how hard it is for you guys to be up there, to have to take shots from people, and I just want to tell you, I respect your service. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Bill Nelson.
Mayor Colacott and councilmembers, mine would be very short and sweet. I want to make a recommendation to the council that you elect Vince Rosini as mayor and Robbie Pitts as mayor pro tem. You know, this is the order that they normally go in, and I think you should continue with that. On the two new councilmembers, you've campaigned on ending divisiveness and bringing civility to the council. You don't want to start off your council career here with having a controversy about the mayor the first thing you have. I know, have been a victim of being passed over for mayor pro tem, how divisive that can be. So I would caution you that you should go in the order that we normally go in and elect Vince and Robbie as mayor pro tem. Both of these men are very well qualified to be mayor, but it's just the order you should take them in.
Our next speaker is Brian Ferris.
My name's Brian Ferris. I was actually born and raised here in Villa Park and make my home here now in Villa Park. And I want to say congratulations to Chad Zimmerman and also Crystal Miles. And I know in the past with baseball, she's shown great leadership, and I think it's a great thing for Villa Park that she's been elected to the city council. I want to voice my support for Vince Rosini. You know, not only does he have the background education in public administration, but also his career as a highway patrol officer. He understands the public sector. I think he's also really done a good job the last few years forging relationships with the county. And not only against you, Robbie Pitts, but it's no being mayor pro tem, and our city, I think, could do well just following protocol and just making sure we don't have a divisive city council in the next term. So thanks very much.
Our next speaker is Karen Goldberg.
My name is Karen Goldberg. I'm at 10882 Vita Drive, and I wanted to say thank you to the wonderful council. Everyone on there has been so dedicated to our city. I wanted to say thank you very much. I know, living next to Deanna Facinelli, I see the long hours you guys put in on all the different issues and all the researching you have to do on all our issues, and I really appreciate it, and I wanted to say thank you to all of you. It's a lot of hours, and I wanted to say thanks to the city staff. We really appreciate all your professionalism and your guidance and everything that you do for us, and really appreciate it. It's a lot of work. I wanted to start off saying, Crystal Miles, I know her very well. She kind of helped run our Little League, and I see her run her company, her family business, her and her husband, and she does a great job. She'd be fantastic mayor. I can't wait to see her as mayor one day. I know Chad I've just met, but he is the most transparent, wonderful, honest man. I think I've met in a long time, and I really liked him and I love his family. So I don't know you that well, but I think you're going to make a great mayor one day. I know Rosini a little bit, because our daughters went to the same school, and I think he would make a great mayor. I know Bob a little bit, just from, you know, the dogs stuff, and thank you for being mayor. Appreciate it. I'll see you out with the dogs and at our functions and everything. And Robbie, I know I've really become good friends with Robbie because of Deanna and watching you at the council meetings, and I think you're going to make a great mayor. So I think we really are a win-win here, because we have a lot of great people here, and I think we're going to have a great four years. The other thing is, is that I know Rosini's a mayor, pro tem mayor, but I do think that I looked at a lot of the old films, the old meetings, and it's so nice to have them on the internet, so we can look through the meeting minutes, we can look through the video, and I just to try to say, well, you know, who really should be mayor? Is it always the pro tem, or, you know, who should we vote for? And I really think that it should be who would be best that represents Villa Park, and Rosini, I think, would be a great mayor. I just kind of go for Pitts more, because I, looking at the films and all the meetings, minutes, and everything, I really saw him when the council was going down the wrong direction and divisiveness. I really saw Robbie reign in the council. His leadership skills were amazing. He said, you know, really, we need to focus on the facts, we need to focus on the job in front of us, and we need to focus on what the citizens, you know, voted us in. And that is to keep the, on the agenda and not go off on tangents and not go down the road that we shouldn't be going down. And I really think that he is the strongest candidate, even though Rosini, you're going to be great, you'd be great, but I really think that he has that leadership skills to guide us to where we need to go and be focused as a community on community activities and community issues. And so, good luck to anybody, everybody, and we're going to have a great four years.
Our next speaker is Jim Reichert.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, new councilmembers, I had a lot of issues with the previous council in terms of decorum and voting blocks, and I think a lot of you heard me speak about that in the past. I look at now all the councilmembers, I look at the mayor as a person having experience, a person that provides leadership, and a person that is neutral. And I had a lot of issues with voting blocks. And I look at the mayor as a person that encourages discussions from both sides, brings it along, and tries to get agreement on most all decisions. I know that's not always possible, but the mayor should try to get agreement with all the councilmembers. And when I look at the person that I feel can best do that for the new council is Robbie Pitts.
That's the last of the speaker cards. Does anyone else want to speak before we move to the item? Seeing no one will move forward. Okay, let me outline real briefly the process we'll be going through this evening, and then I'll answer any questions, and then we'll open up for nominations. So basically, at the time it's open, I'm going to declare at this point in time that the office of mayor, mayor pro tem, are vacant. I will be accepting nominations and open them. We'll vote on the mayor first. The members need not be recognized to make a nomination. In other words, they'll be the first come, speak up after I open them up. They may nominate any of the sitting councilmembers, including themselves. All five are eligible. No second will be required, but sometimes one or more members will second nomination just to indicate endorsement. That's appropriate if so desired. When it appears no one else wishes to make a nomination, the city clerk will ask if there are any further nominations. If there's no response, we'll start, we'll declare the nominations period closed. After nominations are closed, will voting take place? All votes will be taken by a roll call vote, which I'll call. If more than one nominee, in other words, we get multiple nominations, they're voted on in the order in which they are nominated, one at a time. For example, in the favor, those in favor will vote yes, those opposed will no, and we'll have, once we, once the three, one candidate has three votes affirmative, that person will be elected, and they'll be declared elected. No votes will be taken on the remaining nominees. Okay? So once we've done the mayor, mercifully, the mayor will take over and have to do it for the mayor pro tem. Yeah, okay, so I'm done. If there are any questions before I open up nominations, have at it.
I have a question, seeing that Chad and I are new. I would like to know, is there in fact a protocol for mayor pro tem to mayor?
There is, and I've answered this question to a number of councilmen. There is no formal written protocol. It is a, there may be a practice protocol, but there's nothing written in the guidelines for the operational procedures or the city municipal codes.
I have a question. I didn't hear a section there where we talk about what we think is right before we nominate, and I'm wondering if that's something that, especially on this decision, I mean, we're asking somebody to become mayor, I'm wondering if there's some input or there's some...
You have the moment right now. That's, that would be the opportunity right now to speak, and that's why before I open up nominations, you have the opportunity to voice your opinions about what or whatnot should be.
Right. So, I mean, I guess the, my first question is, of all five members up here, is there anybody that is not willing to be, to serve as mayor, or doesn't feel they're qualified, or isn't, I mean...
I've served my year and looking forward to being the past mayor.
Yeah. I mean, I, I have heard, I want to make sure, I expressed that I've heard all of our residents' input, and I think it's really valuable that we had everybody come out and talk about this issue. It shows there's a tremendous amount of involvement and thought out in our community. There's also a lot of thought inside here. I know we've all thought about this decision and what's going to happen, and it would be nice to kind of hear each other's thoughts on this in terms of who we think is best and why we'd like to be mayor. I heard a couple people say about, that maybe Crystal and I, as new people, shouldn't be mayor, and I just want to dispel that right away. I've led councils or board meetings and plenty of, had the opportunity to provide unity and to bring things together, and one of my opinions is that when we sought to end divisiveness, one of the things that we could do as mayor is provide an alternative to those choices that are out there being just Robbie or Vince, and provide that unity to the whole council. I think that's another option, and I just want to say that while I've heard what you said, I respectfully disagree and have my own thoughts on that.
That's an independent thinker.
Yeah. So I'm curious, I know Vince and Robbie have both been posited by the community as mayor. I'm wondering if you want to be mayor, why? Is that fair to ask? Vince?
I will be happy to defer to my colleague here and give him the opportunity.
I think that over the course of the last couple of years, I've had the opportunity to stand up. Oh, speak up. Is it working?
Yes, it's working.
You have to speak directly into it.
It's weak?
There you go. Too close.
You know, I've had the pleasure of serving this city for the last two years on council, and I also have lived in...
I think it's been two years or one year, I'm sorry. I thought it was one year.
No, it's two years. For the past two years... For the past two years, and have served the city in so many different ways as a volunteer in many organizations in this city, and I think that's important. It's easy to sit here on the dais and pass ordinances and do things that we think are the best for the city, but really, you know, being a part of the city, being a part of the heart of the city, working with the people and understanding the needs of the citizens of Villa Park is very important for a mayor and a mayor pro tem. I think it's for the whole council. You know, one of the things I prided myself on in the last two years was I studied a lot, and I, and when I came to the council meetings on, you know, when they had them, I was prepared. You know, I understood the issues, I understood both sides, I researched, I talked to the people in Villa Park and tried to understand their points of view. You know, I really appreciate the support that I've seen tonight with all those names that signed a letter that wants me to be mayor. I really do appreciate that, and I think I'll do a good job based on my 20-year history here in the city, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve you on council in any way, shape, or form.
Am I allowed to ask?
It's, the floor is the council's at this point, so the discussion will be up to you.
Open discussion, go for it.
Well, I am asking a question that I wanted to ask you, Robbie, but I couldn't because of the Brown Act. But now that we're in this open forum and everyone's here, I can ask you, I just want to know, why is this year important for you to be mayor versus perhaps doing a mayor pro tem and then being mayor the following year? Why is it important this year to you?
I think, you know, given the opportunity, it takes time to make changes in the way we have been doing things over the course of the last few years. It's not just the last two years, but I've seen, I've seen change needed for some time, and I don't want to wait till the last minute to be able to affect change and to, you know, we talk about decisiveness on the council. Yes, we shouldn't all agree. This shouldn't always be a 5-0 vote. You know, we all have different opinions about how things should be done, things should be done, and I think it's important that we all think independently and make our decisions based on input that we have from the community and from our heart and our gut. And I think that the only reason I put myself forward right now is I want the opportunity to make some positive change over the course of the next two years by starting with the mayor position.
Well, I definitely think that both of you have a lot of supporters here. I think both of you would be excellent mayors, for sure. You're both qualified. Sometimes, well, what I'd really like to see is I'd like to see you two be able to work it out, so that way, you know, tonight's going to set the tone. And I'd like to see you two be able to, you know, even jokingly, if you did six months with you and six months with you, that way, no one's unhappy. But I also work off logic, and logic to me makes sense. The voters voted, they turned out in record numbers. They want an end to the fighting, they want an end to the divisiveness, and I certainly hope that tonight we can, we can work it through and figure something out and we can move forward and get over this. My understanding is mayor is more of a ceremonial title. Is that true?
The mayor has, the mayor has a number of responsibilities, primarily representing the city in signatures for contracts. He has input in the appointments, makes recommendations regarding appointments to councils and membership boards, and he'll represent the city on various and sundry, like countywide organizations. He may have to attend, but there's no, all five, they're all equal five votes. There's no, and I was teasing everyone this morning, nobody gets to wear an M on their chest and become a super mayor. It's all, it's all a matter of working in compromise and working with the four other council members.
So, there's no veto power, there's no, it still requires the majority vote.
And to put something on the agenda still requires the two council people to put it on, and it's still a majority of three.
There's no cap.
No cap.
My mom said it very clearly, it's the first among equals.
Yes.
That's a key thing. I didn't, if we could go back, Vince, I know I'd asked you a question, I'd love to hear you answer.
I think I just demonstrated the first step in being a mayor, and that's listening. And that's not so I can get the answers because I have the answers. And that's not to say that I have all the answers because nobody has all the answers. But I listen. I listen to the residents, I listen to my colleagues, I listen to staff, I listen to other elected officials, I listen to the people. To answer your question, because I'm assuming it's going to come back my way, why is this year important to me? This year's important to me for a number of reasons. Number one, many of which Robbie already elicited, but also, I want to continue some of the things that I have begun and champion them and make sure that we continue down the road of improvement. Villa Park is arguably the most amazing city in Orange County. It's truly a hidden jewel. People ask me constantly, "Where is Villa Park?" And that's the beauty of it. It's this little slice of paradise buried amongst other cities. And if you're so fortunate to live here, count your blessings, and I do every single day. I'm raising my children here. I haven't lived here as long as Robbie. If I did, I'd probably have a laundry list of folks that would support me. But I did have the most votes during that election, and I think folks, votes talk. So, I appreciate all those folks that have supported Robbie. I just am humbled and honored of the folks that are here tonight to support me, and even the folks that have opposed me, that sat down with me. I've sat down with Mr. Reichert in the past, I've sat down, doesn't necessarily oppose me, but I've sat down with him. We've had phenomenal, intelligent conversations. Mr. Carter, again, not necessarily supporting me tonight, but again, I think there's an extremely healthy respect there. I haven't always agreed with Diana Fassinelli, but I do appreciate her passion, and anybody that denies that, anybody that diminishes that is foolish. And I want to continue what she started with the schools, and I want to see that relationship foster. And my kids do not go to public schools, and that's for a simple reason, classroom size. I pay a hell of a price, and I know that's been a bit of a fun thing for some council members to banter about. I take it very personally. It's not. It's, it was a very difficult decision. I was a public school kid K through 12, so was my wife. So, I support public school kids, I support private school kids, I support volunteers, teachers, administrators. My mom was an administrator in a public school. So, I guess I didn't come here with a fancy speech or an agenda. I came, and I'm asking for your support because of my track record, because of my education, because I have been the only council member who has reached out and set up meetings to try to end the divisiveness, the only one, and that's fact. And I really would appreciate humbly and respectfully your support tonight. I guarantee you, I'm going to do two things. Listen, learn, three things, and vote with what's in your best interest, not mine, not my friends, not my special interest group, your best interest. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Chad.
Appreciate it. I like each one of these people up here. I'm so lucky to have this council this year, and I think that any one of us would do a fantastic job, but I really wanted to hear those opinions so that could feed into the discussion on top of the rest of the input that we have. So, I'm really thankful for the discussion that we've had. I think that's, it's key for us, and that's what I hope lends towards us ending the divisiveness is for us to get along, to talk about our opinions, and to see if we can put something together and come up with an answer that might fit the situation.
Can I make a comment also about, I don't necessarily think that because I've never served on council that I am not qualified to serve as mayor. I don't think it's the logical choice, but there's a part of me, honestly, that if, no offense, if the two of them can't figure it out, we can't figure it out, then I would gladly take it just because I have no baggage, I don't have two years of problems with anybody, and I'm not going to pick a side, so.
If I can address that, because that's somewhat geared towards Robbie and I.
That was definitely good.
Yeah. Robbie and I have sat down, Robbie and I have shared drinks and conversations and do have many things in common. There are, there were other players and other aspects within the community that highlighted, and in my opinion, for political purposes, not necessarily genuine purposes, a false divide. That was an election year bit of bantering. Sure, there have been many votes that we disagreed upon, but there were also more votes that we did agree upon, and I think that point needs to be made. And I can guarantee you that Robbie and I agree on more things than we are different on. And I think that if I'm elected mayor, again, I'm going to listen first, and I pledge to you, I pledge to my colleagues, I pledge to Robbie, I pledge to all of Robbie's supporters that I will make sure that I am humble, respectful, and vote with my conscience and not with who my friends are or where I live.
Well, and I hope that supporters of both Robbie and Vince recognize that whoever's chosen, because sometimes, just in the past couple of days, I've kind of felt like some of the pressure to create the sides has come from our community. So, I'm really hopeful that the community respects whoever is decided as mayor and mayor pro tem.
Bob, you've been kind of quiet. Do you have a, just curious about your opinion on this matter, if you wanted to weigh in?
I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, the issues, the battle we should be fighting is not amongst ourselves. The battles we should be fighting are the external influences that are trying to, that are tending towards taking away what we all want to achieve, and that's to keep Villa Park just like it is. We have developments around us that want to put more traffic, that are putting a lot of traffic through Villa Park, which is damaging our quality of life. That's a battle we need to fight. We have the battle against Father Time. Our, you know, infrastructure's getting older, we need to fight that and come up with effective battle plans so that we can keep our infrastructure together, keep the beauty of our community together at a cost that we can afford so we can maintain our independence as an independent city. Our battles are not with each other, we're, you know, we're a family here. And I think that we need to work together towards that goal of keeping Villa Park just like it is, but as I described in my earlier comments, we want to be on the improving side of the slope, not the declining city's part of the slope. I do want to comment on the protocol. For the first, the city's been incorporated since 1962, and up until just a couple of years ago, we had, we did have, although we didn't have a formal written procedure, we had a tradition where the mayor pro tem transitioned to the mayorship. And I think it's been, it's served the city well. The departure only became, occurred as a result of some divisiveness. It's time to end that. Go back to the tradition that's served us so well for well over half a century. Again, you know, all of you, all four of you will have the opportunity over the next four years to be mayor, mayor pro tem. That's a fact. It'll happen. Part of the benefit of having the mayor pro tem transition into the mayor is what I received from Bill Nelson. He brought me into his meetings with, weekly briefings with our city manager, and we discussed things. I got, you know, I got their perspective, inside perspective on what it means to be mayor and how to, and the issues that are before us from their perspective. I have similarly brought Vince into my meetings with our city manager and, you know, brought him into other discussions and introduced him to folks to prepare him to be mayor, hoping that we would, in this divisiveness, move into the, you know, back to our traditional role, protocol, and let everybody move through, get their shot in the barrel, and move on. So, that's my perspective on things, and, you know, again, we should be looking to fight battles not with other residents in Villa Park, but we should be looking to fight battles to those influences that are trying to detract from what we want to accomplish with our city, which is to make it the best city we can, it can be.
I think those were my questions. Thanks for letting me indulge. I know I'm going to be a little wordy sometimes and look for additional input, so I, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any questions? Okay, I would say like I said, we're going to go to, one, I'll declare the offices, which I'll do right now. Offices of mayor, mayor pro tem are vacant. We are voting on mayor, and I, just a second, I'm going to say that the nominations are open. Again, it's, speak up and you tell me when, who the first nominations are there. So, we all know there can only be five nominations, five of you, and my math is still that good. So, hopefully, we won't get that far, but we'll get, we'll vote until you guys, we will not vote until you guys finish your nominations. If we have to get all five out here, we'll eventually get to all five. We'll go one through five sequentially on the voting. So, with that, I'm going to open up the nominations, so.
Steve?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to place a nomination, please. I'd like to nominate Vince Rossini as next mayor of Villa Park.
Nice. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to recognize that as true leadership. That's a fantastic move.
So, I'm assuming there's no other nominations. Can I have an affirmative vote from each of you when I call out your names? And we will go forward into transitioning back, and he can run the mayor pro tem, and he'll probably not have as much to talk about. Okay, so, we'll start out with Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Let's see, mayor pro tem, no, I'm sorry, we'll go with councilwoman, Crystal Miles.
Yes.
Councilman Chad Zimmerman.
Yes.
Former mayor pro tem Rossini.
With a tremendous amount of humility, yes.
And former mayor, Robert Colacott, I'm thinking you'd gladly give up the gavel.
Yes.
All right, we have a 5-0 vote in our new mayor. If I could ask you to change seats. I just said if you two could change seats. It's, the seat designation at this time is simply done, so we have recognized the mayor for the camera purposes, candidly. Then now, we're going to go into the selection of the mayor pro tem, and then I'm going to hand it back to the mayor, to the new mayor, and congratulate mayor. It took me a long time to get used to Mayor Colacott. I kept calling him Mayor Nelson for a while. So, anyway, Mayor Rossini, if you'd like to run the meeting again, we're good to go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As my first order of business as the mayor, I will conduct the election for mayor pro tem and am accepting nominations.
I'd like to nominate Robbie Pitts.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Steve?
I don't make a nomination. So, it's up to you if you, if there are no other nominations.
I don't believe there are any other nominations.
So, I'll call for the, call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
We'll do it, I guess...
Roll call vote?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman, now Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, bear with me, it's a transition here. Councilwoman Miles.
Yes.
Okay, and the Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
So, mayor, that's the only business we have for this evening, so if you would like to adjourn the meeting, we'll, our next regular meeting will be in two weeks for December 18th at 6:30.
You're by adjourned.